All right, we are right at 6:30, so I'll call our workshop to order. Karen, could you just roll for the record? And I'd like to invite everyone to rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have an agenda before us this evening. Just a quick note for the record that we are in workshop format tonight. So this is an informal working session of council. Anything that is discussed tonight that requires formal action will be brought forward at a future meeting. And much of tonight's discussion will center around the 2022 budget plan. And that is on the agenda for next Monday's council meeting for preliminary levy adoption. That, again, the preliminary levy will be adopted at the end of September and then will be finalized as part of our final budget truth and taxation hearings that happen at the end of the year in December. We do have an open forum scheduled this evening. I don't see anybody in council chambers for open forum, but Karen, do we have anyone participating online?
No.
All right. We will move on to our next item, which is the introduction of our new accounting manager. And Sandy, I'll turn that over to you.
Yes. I am pleased that we have an accounting manager onboard. Kim Carlson came to us and the nick of time and with the utility billing coming in play and a lot of other things that we've talked about of changes in the department. We're in a reorganization state, changing processes, making processes to be more identified with the staff. So we're going to be working really hard and Kim's going to be working really hard and it's nice to have somebody who's available 100% of the time for that processing piece. And that's going to help out a great deal in this whole process and reorganization. So I'd like to invite Kim Carlson if she would like to say a word or two or not.
We didn't talk about that.
Since you will see her at the meetings.
How many sound orders told everybody as well as had to. Well, like I said, my name is Kim Carlson. I just started last Wednesday and for the three days I'm here, I'm really enjoying it. I see a lot of changes and stuff that we can make for improvement for everybody's processes and funding and everything. So I think it's going to be really good. I have a background of many different areas, but mostly government. I've worked up in a small county, Pennington County. I grew up in Carlston, Minnesota, so I'm a small town girl. Went after I left Pennington County, was chief deputy auditor and did, wore many hats and stuff. I got some different jobs down in the cities because since I wore many hats, elections, I was an election administrator for the Secretary of State's office. I was a project manager for the Department of Administration implementing a fleet management system from scratch. And then I just came from the DNR or, no, cross that out, no DNR, DOT, totally separate. DOT where I was a fleet manager there, but we did a lot with budgets and everything. So pleased to come onboard and I like the challenge and I like the environment and the people and I think it's going to be a great fit.
Fantastic. Welcome.
Welcome.
Looking forward to working with you. All right, next, right on cue, update and discussion of utility billing credit card fees.
Yes. This is something that started off with no intention whatsoever of doing anything differently than what we had in the past. And, you know, there was, you know, after hearing all of the concerns and all the concerns from citizens and customers, I actually went into the back door of the credit card company because I wasn't finding the answers that everybody else was saying that they had on their credit cards. And so I went through the back door of the company and had to do my own research. You know, first and foremost, I think this is where Kim's position is going to be very helpful. First and foremost, we need to have the right information in our department. And I don't believe we do right now. And hence the reason I had to do research myself in order to find that information. So I think it's going to be very helpful with Kim being in the place of being in them operations 100% of the time. Because I did indeed find after doing my research and that we never did charge customers. And so we are going to be changing that and it won't take us much to change it. We just have to, you know, contact invoice cloud to do that. And also, you know, if anybody was negatively affected, of course, they'd be reimbursed any charges. So this is a prime example of why we have that accounting manager onboard. I think there's systems and processes and right information that we need to have in order to do things and make decisions properly. And we now have the help to do that and make the changes and make it a better situation for us tomorrow.
Perfect. Just kind of a comment to piggyback on that, it's not, it's the staff, but also just clarification for everybody. We are bringing that entire process in-house. And so I think there was always some, maybe some question or not, because it was fully outsourced, we didn't have a full understanding of what was.
That's correct. That's correct.
What those relationships were, what the customer experience was also.
Yeah, I think there was, you know, certainly a piece of having it outsourced, disconnected employees from the process. Do I think we still should have had the knowledge? Yeah, I do. And I think, you know, now that we understand, you know, some of the issues we may be having as far as what knowledge we should have and make sure that we understand, each staff member needs to understand what their, you know, what they need to do and what their process is and what their understanding should be. And I think we need to have that. Oh, I think we need to have that understanding and we're going to be working on that. And like I said, staff was detached from the process and I think, you know, having the, you know, things outsourced can certainly, you know, create that kind of situation. And we've had a lot of things going on in the last two years and, you know, making my position coming in and having that outsourced before. So there was a lot of things that I think happened that made it hard for staff to understand that they had a responsibility in certain areas.
So also, can you give a kind of an overview on just where we are with the transition? So is everybody on the same quarterly billing cycle or are there multiple billing cycles across the city? So is it a staged rollout or is?
It's all the same.
Everybody's on the same quarterly billing cycle?
Right. I mean, some have annual bills, which is of course, you know, an annual billing process, but the quarterly billing is going to be the same for everyone.
Okay.
Yeah. And, you know, Kim has been very involved. This is her first responsibility is to get involved in that utility billing and understanding that process so that we can both wrap our heads around, you know, what needs to be done yet. And, you know, I think we got a good handle on everything and I think staff has a good handle on it as well as far as what needs to be done in the process so far to get that out. It's just that we just got to make these few changes yet and changes along the way as we go through the process. And I don't anticipate there to be issues with it and particularly with having Kim onboard.
And so if anybody was charged a credit card fee, those are being reversed? Is that what will happen in the next cycle?
Yeah, we will be reversing those. Yep.
Can you clarify, Sandy, then are we, are we, is there still a cost involved with this? And are we absorbing that cost?
We are. And we've been absorbing that cost. There was a different payment structure and this is kind of what the understanding of the staff was, a different payment structure a couple of years ago, where there probably wasn't as many credit card holders at that point in using the system. And the fee charge was Opus would, or our third-party billing would actually charge a fee for online going, or phone by bank charges and whoever used their credit card would get charged a fee for that. So there was some charges that were incurred with the customers, but for the most part, we have been incurring that charge. And I think if, you know, we look at, if Dave were to look at his line items for those fees, you know, they have been rising over these last few years, which means that more people are using credit cards. But also this is a cost that's occurring and as more use this credit card, we're going to be getting more and more charges.
So we have been, this charge has been occurring. Okay. And we were not aware of it with?
Well, we weren't aware of what that charge really was.
Okay.
It's, like I said, with the third-party billing, it was just, it was convoluted in what those charges meant, but now we know what they actually mean. And that, like I said, we have to understand that process and make sure that process is understood within our department. But those fees certainly have been charged to us.
So do we understand what the impact of that is going to be if we're going to be absorbing?
I can certainly provide that to you. And that was kind of my next, I think that transparency needs to be shown.
Yep.
Because it is growing and I can give you like the last three years of what it was and show you what those charges as a whole were and what they've grown these last few years. And this year, we can do the same.
And but to piggyback on council member Bryson's question and to maybe clarify, the fees, we have been absorbing the fees for the last couple of years.
Right.
It's just that that amount is increasing because credit card usage is growing up. So while we're looking at that, I think it would also be helpful just to understand the trade-off. If people aren't paying by credit card, we've got the cost of whether it's either lockbox or manual processing and be helpful to understand just what does that effort look like as well? Because there is some trade-off there.
Absolutely. I mean, it's a time saver for us as far as processing payments. However, we're going to be having a different processing of check payments as well, where we're going to be having, scanning them in versus entering them in. We got a barcode system now with the new system where we don't have to necessarily enter them in. So we would have to probably do an analysis to determine what that cost benefit is and how many man-hours it actually will take now doing a credit card, because there's still going to be some kind of process of that credit card payment and going reconciling that through invoice cloud or credit card company. So we'd have to really figure out what that cost benefit is.
Other questions related to just utility billing update in general?
No, this was brought up at the last meeting. I'm glad it's getting resolved with the charges because there was a kind of an empty gap there, you know? So thanks, Sandy, for working on that.
Agree. All right, let's transition then to 2022 budget presentation and discussion. And Sandy, I think you're walking us through this. While you're pulling that up, just a point of reference, this is our second workshop on this topic. So second working discussion opportunity to get to the next layer of detail and certainly to tee up any open questions, discussion items and needs we may have of staff as we're looking for a preliminary levy vote next Monday. Okay? Go ahead. Thank you.
And this presentation hasn't changed since the last time you seen it, but I figured we'd go through it real quickly, a little bit more quicker than what Patrick had presented to you last time around. But it would at least, and what we're hoping to do is figure out what else we need to, you know, put in this process and recommendations and comments from the council as far as what you would like to see. And here's the schedule that was in place. And today, of course, we're having another discussion regarding the budget discussion and determining for next Monday's meeting, the council meeting, that we have to adopt that preliminary levy, which is a requirement by September 30th or 28th to do so. So that's where we're at at this point in time, but we do have some time available in October and November as well to have further discussions for that final levy, when that final levy comes into play come December 13th, when we have to have that truth and taxation hearing as well as the adoption of the levy and the budgets. So that's kind of the schedule that we're in right now. And here's just a brief description of what is a budget, an annual financial and policy document for how we provide services to our residents, includes operating and capital cost and an instrument used by the rating agencies to determine the financial and operational stability of the organization. And our goal is to provide the best possible service in the most efficient manner at the lowest cost to the community. And here's the brief discussion of, or presentation of each fund and what the budgets, corresponding budgets are, as well as the total budget at $29,446,930. And like I said, this was presented last time, so if there's any questions on that, we can certainly come back to it.
Can you, and maybe we'll come back to it. Sorry, I did not look through this full presentation and align my questions. Yes. So further in the presentation and from this slide, we talked about adding a half community development, half EDA position, but I noticed that the EDA budget is still only at about the $50,000 that we've had historically in the EDA budget. So is that position, am I reading, am I missing something or?
Yeah, so the EDA budget as proposed in here should be 150, not 50. That was discussed in the August meeting with the EDA was to do, increase it from 50 to 150 to account for that staff.
So on the, so the expenditure summary that's on the screen right now, the 43092, is that the increase? No, that's the full budget.
No. I'm looking at the budgets right now to see if we have everything in there that we should.
So is this the 2021 expenditure summary?
Oh, yeah. Is that what this is? So is your current screen, is this 2021?
This is the 2021 expenditure summary?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Correct.
Yep.
Got it. I will pull that question till later.
And here's the percentage of where the tax levies go. 70.63% is general fund and most of the city's labor costs, materials and supplies are included in this. The capital equipment fund at 7.18%. And this is the long-term funding mechanism that addresses the need to replace the major equipment. And we're talking about the fire trucks, snowplows, street sweepers and construction equipment. Capital paving improvement fund at 1.6%. The street paving and repairs currently, and this is what's currently funded with the state shared revenue and franchise fees. Debt service fund at 18.6% and that's the repayment of our general obligation debt. And just a reminder, the debt service does not include the utility, the sewer and the water funds because they pay for their own debt. Economic development fund at 1.2% and that's used to fund economic development initiatives, parks and trails. And these are just examples that were provided as far as how much certain things cost. Fire truck at $680,000, just to give an example of things that we have to purchase that are large amount. If we, we're always in need of squad cars, they have a low life expectancy at $48,000 each time, each vehicle, and normally it's more than one vehicle. Truck with snowplow at $241,500. And paving cost, $528,000 per mile without the curbing and $792,000 with the curbing. And here's the 2022 budgets where were operational changes that are going to occur. And this is what was alluded to. The general fund is adding a patrol officer, police sergeant and a half of the community development EDA position, where the other half is going to be funded out of the EDA. Water and sewer and surface water funds, we're going to upgrade positions to utilities, for the utility superintendent, which is going to be not an added position, but just upgrading that position into a different level. And other operational issues that we still need to work on is continue to work on the long-term financial plan. This is something that hopefully will be brought to the council at a future date. Utility rates, take a look at that as well and see what those rates will be in the future. New bonding for infrastructure, is this a possibility? As well as funding of park improvements. Discussing equipment certificates for major rolling stock, you know, instead of funding for it on an annual basis, maybe we do an equipment certificates to purchase the equipment. Take a look at the staffing levels. What should they be and where they should be at in each year to come. Communications, we're identified in the strategic planning session and the goal to improve communication of the city. And we still need to improve our communications with the public as well. And where we're at with the wages and benefits and cost of services and materials, the ASME contract is, has a tentative settlement as well as the 49ers. May, we'll start having conversations in September and don't know, I'm assuming when Patrick gets back, he'll be having those conversations. LELs, patrol and sergeants, their contract is in place until 2022. Okay, and here's the proposed new tax levy summary compared to 2022 and looking, comparing it to last year or current year of 2021 and the changes that take place. The general fund, $733,000. Capital equipment, $100,000. Pavement improvement, $100,000. EDA increase, $100,000, as well as parks and trails increase $50,000. To meet those needs in those various areas, that was Patrick's recommendation at the last meeting, bringing the total dollar change at $1,082,972, bringing it to a total levy increase of 9.46%. And when you look at the tax rate, and this is something that is estimated at this point for 2022 until Washington County comes to the rate, rather than being an estimate, it be the actuals. But at this point, we're looking at 2021, the local tax rate was 40.641%, whereas in 2022 with these increases would be 41.88%. So there's a marginal increase even though, you know, we show a 9.46 of increase in levy, it really brings up our tax rate a different amount than what it really shows.
When do you expect to have that number?
Usually for sure in October. It usually is finalized and we get that final data. So we should know by the final, for sure by the final levy process. And this is just a graphical form of it and showing the last few years what it's, and it actually is in line with the last few years and lower than what it had been previously.
I've been thinking this week on just where my questions are in this process and what information do we need to make decisions? Can you flip back to the previous slide? One thing I think it'd be helpful for me to have in particular and maybe other council members would find it helpful as well, we've spent a lot of time focused on our, what's happening on the expense side, but certainly the tax rate is, you know, the blend between what's happening with revenues versus with expenses. Could we, could you show the local, the local tax value? Today, obviously, the proposed 2022 is estimated and we can see the projected change over 2021 is 6%. So we're kind of comparing a 9.46% levy increase with a 6% increase in revenue. Could we break that out maybe five years or 10 years in the past, just so we can see how our, at a year-by-year level, how expenses are growing or shrinking with revenue?
So revenue expense comparison and what is that?
Yeah.
Through the last five years?
Yep. So like, and maybe even 10, maybe even 10 years. So the top line, so the levy before the reduction for stated, so that top line and then the second to bottom line, the local taxable value, it'd just be helpful to see those trended out over a 10-year period.
Okay.
And we, we see that result when we look at the trend line for the tax rate.
Right.
But it'd be helpful to be able to articulate the 9% movement compared to the 6% movement.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Yeah, because there's so much that makes up that local tax rate where for a growing city, that actually affects the tax rate as well.
Story that I'm, and they don't always fall in line, but that's the overall picture. I think it'd be helpful to see that it's not just a 9%, it's not just a proposed 9% increase in levy, it's also that we are a growing community and we've got 6% more taxable value, which is, you know, kind of an approximation of, you know, cost to serve those residents.
And I think we've talked a lot about balancing that growth with spending, you know, and I, you know, it provides some justification for some of the decision-making. I think a great example of that is the PD, you know, and when we look at, when we look at staffing comparatively to a few years ago and the growth that we've experienced in the city, we are very under-resourced. I mean, when you, when you, so that would be my illustration of, you know, kind of balancing, balancing that.
And then looking, taking that, but then also the context we just had when we were looking at residential zoning and the potential growth that is coming in the near term on residential zoning. And so just making sure that we're currently staffed, but also prepared for the next five years, recognizing that onboarding happens in cycles and we're kind of in one of those transition periods, I think.
I think this is good information as we think about that 10, 15, 20-year plan as well, right? That trend data is, it will be really valuable, kind of trying to project out what we need to do each year, right? And that balance that we're trying to strike.
I can certainly do that and figure out if there's even additional information I can provide in that area.
I think when you get to the rate slide over time, the percentages there, I'm just looking for both in the growth in the numerator and the growth in the denominator by year.
Yeah.
Helpful.
Well, that's context. Helpful.
This is also me still, I am still struggling with 9%. I just have to say that. It's a big number and so I'm trying to wrap my head around.
And yeah, it's because of that growth, you see this tax rate so much different because it's, it has that growth factor in there.
Mm-hmm. And I, and I think it's not only valuable for us, but I think it's an important communication tool as well, you know, with, with our constituency, you know, to help them understand, you know, because I say this every year, you know, that 9.46% reflects actual need, right? And maybe not even all of it, you know, because we are trying to be a little conservative here. So, you know, I do think we have to be honest about that need and then have conversations about what we're trying to do strategically to balance.
And compared to that growth.
Right.
This is the real, realistic number of why we got to this.
Right.
And this is just a slide that Patrick had shown where we're at with all the other cities and that we compare to and we're in the middle of the road. And of course, it's estimated still, but this is kind of where we land in years in the past and, but it gives an idea of where we're at. And of course, some, some of these comparisons, it's not really an apples-to-apples, so it's a little bit hard to say that it's one, you know, the same comparison, but some of them do have the same comparison.
Is this chart looking at 2021 actual budget? Is that the timeline we're looking at?
Yeah. Yeah. Because there's, there's no way of really knowing 2022 at this point.
I just wasn't sure if you were taking like a five-year blended rate or something. So, okay, good to know.
But of course, it has, it has forced. But of course, it has, it has forced like estimated at this point.
Yeah.
So it's a comparison, only comparison that we can have with the information we have. And here, this is just another comparison of it based on the Minnesota average as well. And um, looking at the Minnesota average, we're, we're lower than a lot of cities. And this is the tax impact um, based on, you know, what does the property tax purchase? If you own a home with a value of three hundred thousand, your property tax bill to support city services will be approximately one thousand two hundred and thirteen. And breaking it down between month and day, and a day, it's three dollars and thirty-two cents. And what you get, um, twenty-four hours, seven days per week of police protection as well as fire protection. Um, public works, streets, street lighting, snow plowing engineering, as well as parks, trails and recreation opportunities.
Mayor Bean, can I just make a comment?
Please.
Just piggybacking off of what um, Councilmember Beistrum said, and I think we said this last year and probably the year before, that this slide is so important for the residents to see and understand that, that they're actually buying services that help them and protect them. And um, they can see where they're driving and have good roads. I hear a lot about roads and, and plowing and, and not being enough. So I think it's really important to, to share what it is that it's, that it's actually going towards.
Absolutely. And all of this cost and, and it's, it's something that everybody is getting a benefit from. And then when you look at the tax impact, and, and this is of course estimated at this point because as, as we said, Washington County isn't completely done with their final information, but um, this will provide a, I, I, we, normally when they come up with an estimate, it's pretty close by, by the end of the day. Um, but when you look at the tax change, a dollar change, um, rather than looking at that local tax rate. Um, when you look at a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, we're talking about a fifty-seven dollar and twenty cent um, dollar change. Um, a three hundred thousand dollar home would be a sixty-nine dollar and sixty-four cent change, whereas a four hundred thousand dollar home would be a ninety-four dollar and twelve cents change. And so this brings it into a different perspective too. It's, it's, you know, the rate can say one thing and, and the percentage of increase can say another, but the dollar changes um, can be so reflected so differently. And that was all for the presentation. So I think what um, the only thing that we have to look forward to is that find, that preliminary levy, um, you know, and what do we want to bring that preliminary levy back for next Monday? But understanding that, you know, you can't bring a preliminary levy up, but you can bring it down.
Mayor Bean, I, I think the still unanswered question for me is, we've been talking a lot about bonding. And that's still unanswered for me, is, is what are we looking at there and what will the impact to our taxpayers be? You know, we've talked, we've, we've talked, I, looking back at some notes that I had taken, we had talked about, maybe if, we had talked about four million, we've talked about eight million. I mean, I, I don't know what, what we were thinking in that regard, and that's just a missing piece of the puzzle for me.
You mean the ten-year plan, or I guess I'm?
Well, we, we had talked about bonding soon, potentially for um, for some of our street improvements, our roads.
Yeah, and um, I don't have a date on when that's going to be brought back, but certainly we're going to have those conversations. Um, Patrick and I, I met with Ellers a few weeks back. And um, we need to figure out that ten-year plan and, and I guess the conversation would be, you know, if there's something that the council is interested in doing um, for the near future, we can certainly have those conversations.
The current, can you go back to the summary slide that kind of illustrates out the different components? Um, maybe it's budget by fund for twenty twenty-two? Um, here we go. So the current proposed budget does not anticipate any increased debt service for twenty twenty-two?
That's correct.
Right, so to your point though, we had talked about potentially doing sooner rather than later, some level of debt issuance. Um, I guess, help us kind of understand sequencing of decision-making. Um, I had thought that maybe there was a discussion around some sort of interest-deferred option for the first year that, that not including interest for twenty twenty-two was not going to prohibit us from having that discussion. Um, but also I sent some hesitancy on, um, I, I think we want to, if, if that decision's going to increase levy for twenty twenty-two, we need to make that decision sooner rather than later.
Absolutely.
Um, so what are, what are thoughts on?
Well, I, I think, you know, Ellers has to be involved in that conversation as far as, you know, what those ramifications will be, what that, you know, dates of the process need to occur and, and, you know, is, does it make sense for us at this point in time to do a deferred? So they would have to provide some scenarios for us. And I think that is the first step if we were to be serious about going out for any bonding, is, is they have to really identify what is the best um, debt for us at this point in time. And, and, and they would be able to then provide what, what, you know, what we have to do, because it's a few-month process in order to get it finalized. And, and they have to set that calendar as far as what we need to do to do that.
Do you have feedback or I? I guess I, it's not the, I'm not comfortable, I, I would prefer to know next, but, you know, by, by Monday or when we, when we make this decision, um, what is the, what is the impact for twenty twenty-two for that type of decision? I just want to make sure that we've got room in the budget to do an issuance if we were to decide to go down that path. What I don't want to do is have the window closed, we haven't budgeted for interest expense, there aren't any options, and now those projects are on the shelf for a year. I just want to make sure we've, we're, we're going into the fourth quarter with as many, my goal would be as many options open as possible. And I just don't understand that timing of what that means for a preliminary levy versus what we can do post.
Well, I think we can leave the budgets as is because this is what's already out there that we have. And if, what we can ask Ellers is if we wanted to do some funding, you know, what type of funding can we do to be able to do projects, but the projects, when would they happen, would be the question? And, and I mean, there's just a lot of different parts that we have to answer before we can really get an answer as far as what kind of funding source.
And also I feel like we're a little bit in a tail wag the dog conversation.
Yeah.
Maybe good opportunity, Ryan and Dave, are we, are, are we thinking about funding far, are we too soon? I mean, are the projects just not lined up and ready to go and this makes sense to be on a future delay? I don't want to earmark money if it's not, if you're going to say it's not quite needed yet, but want to make sure we also don't lose the window.
Uh, Mayor City Council, a number of your questions that you guys just asked, we did run through a number of those scenarios with Ellers that were presented back in March. Uh, and then, you know, those included four different options of what we would do and how we'd lay those projects out between now. And two thousand twenty-six, uh, obviously if we stay with status quo in the funding that we have, we can also see, you know, right now what we're touching, that does not include roads like Eureka or some other roads that are obviously beyond failure. Uh, you know, the magic number between collaboration with Public Works and myself is ten million over five years. So that'd be at twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven. Uh, if.
But not twenty-two? I'm just want to make sure, you, you're thinking not for twenty-two?
Twenty-two is, you're already using bond proceeds.
Okay.
Okay.
So the twenty-two buckets are already filled, funded, we're, okay.
There's my answer.
That's what, that's, that's the missing.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, we have stuff laid out till twenty thirty, but it's.
There's my answer.
Hundreds of estimates, do you guys want to see your figures? You know, you know, we've been down that route, it's basically ten million over five years. If it's seven point five million, it will be a hundred percent pavement maintenance projects.
Understood.
Uh, the costs that are associated with, uh, presentation you guys seen, those are basically the type of road projects we've been doing. They're not full section replacement, not full reconstruction. Obviously Fifth Avenue is much more than that per foot, so, I mean, and that's a full reconstruction, so. And we're trying not to do that and just be smart about how we use our money and pick the right pavement maintenance type of scope of work to make the roads last. Obviously, some of the low-volume roads, it works very well. Some of these bigger roads that we're talking about now, Fenway, Forest Road, Eureka, uh, two hundred and six coming into the Summerfields Developments, we're not funded. So those aren't getting touched if we don't start talking about additional funding.
Right.
In said year, there's discussion at the staff level of making Eureka a dead end at both ends because we don't have the money. And we don't know how we're going to deal with it. And we keep waiting, something bad's going to happen, it's going to cost more money. You know, it could be a potential lawsuit or some fatality just because the road conditions are getting that bad. So we've done estimates of how we would dead-end in figures at a staff level, how we would have, you know, dead ends at both ends, but then still have a pedestrian trail facility connected in between the two, so you could use the lake for fishing, recreation or biking or whatever it might be. Right there, it saves a million and a half dollars. You know, so that's the other stuff we're looking at on the backside of things because if we can't get additional funding, there's going to have to be some other tough decisions made. You know, stuff like that, so.
But what I'm hearing from you is that the window for that decision doesn't have to be the twenty twenty-two budget year, but we need to make some decisions sooner rather than later so that that funding can be put in place for twenty twenty-three project year, is that?
Well, the faster the decisions are made, the faster the efficiency of the projects go on. Uh, and the funding of other funding mechanisms can be in pursuit. We wait till the said year that we're going to do that, we have zero chance of going out and finding out other funding. The Eureka stuff, if you said go right now, I guarantee we could have funding by twenty twenty-three. You know, as another outside source to buy down local costs, but if I don't have that time.
Understood.
Want to be putting a competitive application together to hit a submittal dates, we're never going to be looked at for those opportunities. And that's how we were so successful in constructing a lot of those previous projects that included the trails uh, prior to the double roundabouts constructed because we had a game plan, we knew where we're going. We also had the luxury of our state aid funds available to us, those were tied up with a Goodview Roundabout project. But then our next, you know, through two thousand twenty-six, twenty-seven, there's tied up in the co-op agreement products with Washington County and then MinDOT. So twenty-four construction on county stated Highway thirty-three, which is Everton Avenue from Broadway to Eleventh Avenue. And then twenty-six construction on Eleventh Avenue, which is county stated Highway thirty-two from Highway sixty-one to the bridge. MinDOT twenty-four, twenty-five construction on Highway ninety-seven from the South Roundabout to the Diverging Diamond. And with a potential now roundabout at Fenway. You know, so all three of those have tied up our state local according to cost share policies of what we're trying to advocate for in those projects, the pedestrian facilities, the local legs. So our state aid funds that are, you know, add up to the one point six percent of roads are not touchable. You know, they're going to other stuff, so.
Yeah, the problem with this stuff too, it doesn't get cheaper. Every year it just gets worse and worse, so you get less bang for your buck.
Well, and.
And interest rates may.
Oh, yeah.
Exactly.
We don't know what's going, I mean, it sounds, sounds like.
Very good bids this summer, which we knocked off a bunch of road segments that we had identified in future years that are already done now.
Right, right, right.
So we took the plans and made them stretch as far as we could with the approved budgets. And, you know, that's what we always do, so we'll always continue to add to a project based on the current bid, up to state statute allows us twenty-five percent. Uh, but we still got to stay within the approved budget, so we'd go love to add more, but we'd have to stay within that twenty-five percent too.
So, go ahead. I was just going to summarize, so then as it relates specifically to what is new in the twenty twenty-two proposed budget, related to roads is really only the additional hundred thousand dollars to pavement, the pavement improvement fund.
I think it's just raised at fifty thousand though.
Uh, we raising, we're raising right now a hundred thousand, if, is that the?
It was at least fifty, if not already a hundred.
It used to be fifty, but he bumped it up.
Yeah, we, we upped it a hundred thousand.
First year at a hundred or second year?
First year. I think this is the first year at a hundred. We raised a hundred, an extra fifty thousand, correct?
And the other thing too, to, you know, I know there's been other conversations about particular road segments on what that might look like if it's a road reconstruction. Therefore, then it triggers, if it's a reconstruction, triggers your assessment policy and there needs to be that conversation parallel with any planned future work if you're going to assess it or not, or is the project scaled back so you don't trigger the assessment policy?
But just to bounce off him, I mean, I, I think we have the one million dollars extra from the bond in, in twenty-two. The reason why we want to go five years to twenty-seven because that's when the state aid funds come back. I figure that should come back at that point in time. In the meantime, continuing to increase uh, the levy on the two-eleven fund, you know, substantially. Twenty twenty-three, the franchise agreements are up, it's a ten-year, so that can get discussed where we could see an increase in franchise fees or work that out between Canexus and the two Excels.
Fabulous.
And so I think a bonding to get to twenty-seven and then internally by franchise fees increasing the two-eleven fund um, to get to when you're at twenty-seven to be able to have a healthy.
Right.
Dollar amount every year where you, you hopefully don't have to bond except for be, big reconstruction projects, which like Ryan said, assessments may be talked about where North Shore Drive, you're going to have to redo the entire sewer water, adding a trail and all that. I mean, that's, at some point, you're going to have to talk about, you know, property assessments when you're doing that. So that's kind of the way we look at it, is you get, try to, got to get to, figure out a way to get to twenty-seven. But when you get to twenty-seven, we should really have a, try to have a good plan in place where we have a healthy fund and not having to rely on at least the maintenance projects to continue on these two million, two and a half million dollar projects every year. The big North Shore drives and all that are going to have to be something outside of it or figure out how that, that'll happen.
So what I'm hearing is ideally ten million over five years. That feels like it would get us to where we need to be. Um, but we wouldn't realize any budget impact in twenty twenty-two as a result of any bonding, okay?
Depending on how your payments are set up on any future bonding, you might not have anything affected in twenty-three too. I just, I can't speak on behalf of that.
Okay.
That's it.
I think the only, the only thing, you just don't want to wait till next budget season to plan that.
Right, no, right.
To Ryan's point, if, if you know that, yes, we're going to start bonding in twenty-three, twenty-four, all that.
Right.
Then you can start soliciting grant dollars, like D and R grants, there's, you know, funding for some of these projects where if you can show you have that money available, you know, they're more apt to give you those projects. And the worst thing possible is to get the grant and say, well, we can't afford it, so here's the grant dollars back. You know, so Ryan's point, you want to make sure we're set up on our side to be able to get these dollars and buy it down. And hopefully you buy down, you have the money available, you buy it down, you're able to do more on the other end, so.
And while the current projects are going on, if it becomes a slow day for some reason, or a light drizzle and the contractor pulls a plug, or if the trucks aren't really, got enough trucks moving in a day, our other inspectors have jumped to these future street projects to do, start doing structure assessments, so we don't have to do that in the winter, you know, then ship through ice and spend twice as much time. So you already have that data and we can sit down with Public Works to talk about that. But it also then gives Dave enough time to get all the lines televised, so then we can make more accurate budget estimates, whether sanitary sewer lines or storm sewer lines need to be replaced too. So it's all kind of works together, the more time you have to deal with stuff, whether it's Public Works, our inspections or other grant opportunities.
Yes.
Well, I'd like to see, I'd like to see a presentation sooner rather than later by Eller, by Ellers. Um, ten million over five years and what those numbers look like.
And I know they're been working on it, so they're in the process of um, looking at that plan and they can give then what for the next five years or so.
It would be really nice if we were sitting in this meeting in December and we had that ten-year plan in mind and we can be referencing, here is the building block of how the twenty twenty-two budget is. in mind, and we can be referencing, here is the building block of how the twenty twenty-two budget is gonna work into that ten-year plan, so if we could make that progress between now and the December budget conversation, it'd be, I think that'd be helpful.
We should be able to do that.
I'd kinda like to see a, a, uh, kind of a statement on our debt service, kind of a reminder about when these things will be paid off. Kinda gives us a little insight too.
It's a really good point.
I'd like to see that, if you don't mind doing that, Sandy.
Yeah, and Ellers actually does structures our debt according to that.
Sure.
So, when something falls off, they put something new in, in that, you know, they kinda take that into consideration, so they can show that as well with the ten-year plan.
Be a good reminder for me at least.
Agreed.
So, let's just open it up, other questions, needs, as we're, as we're thinking about moving towards, um, preliminary adoption, and again, it's a preliminary levy, the number can always come down, it just can't go any larger related to general fund. Um, maybe just a couple notes on process, we have not had a lot of robust discussion related to the enterprise funds, sewer or water. However, those are not impacted by the general fund, and so we'll have those conversations here in the fourth quarter. That, those funds will also be approved as part of the budget, but again, there's just no impact to the general fund budget. Um, other process questions or other detail we would like to get into?
Um, there was conversation at one point, and I, I can't remember context fully, about taking a look at, um, potentially moving some of our capital equipment to a lease model?
Yeah, that's the certificates.
Okay.
And, and that's something that's gonna be a whole, all a process of Ellers, um, review.
Okay.
They're looking at that as well, and when they get that ten-year plan done, that's gonna be a piece of that process.
Okay, thanks.
Um, so I'm interested in hearing, um, could you just to support comments or just kinda support this discussion, maybe flip back to the slide that talks about the major twenty twenty-two components, it's the police positions, and then the community development director. Um, so, as I'm thinking about, you know, timing and sequencing and what's important, um, I'm interested in council's feedback on timing for community development director and that EDA position. Um, you know, it's certainly a push on part of our impact for the proposed twenty twenty-two budget. Um, I, I'm teetering between two schools of thought. Um, one school of thought is we're early in a ten-year plan, we're early in the downtown study. Um, we heard, we, we have heard that, you know, that there's a lot of pressure on the residential side of the market, and there's a lot of opportunity that's just naturally going to come. The headline today in the paper was that the Twin Cities housing shortage is the biggest in the country, that we've got the worst shortage in the country. So, that residential development is going to come to Forest Lake. Um, so then I, I think about, of all of our investments from the commercial side, is this the right position at the right time? It's just kind of the question I'm asking myself and asking council in general. Um, I balance that with, if we want to keep our tax rate moderate, like we have, we have to have that balance between residential development and commercial development, that's how we keep a nice low tax rate. And, um, if there is already pressure on the residential side and that growth is coming, we need to balance that with commercial development, and so for those reasons, it is a good time to think about a community development director. Um, but I'm just interested in, there's a time to do that, we've taken um, other positions, and we've had them on a roadmap for a very long time, for example, this, you know, police sergeant position's been talked about for at least four years, and we're just now five years, thank you chief. Um, and when, now we're pulling the trigger, and I think there's a timing consideration of the community development director is we're at a good time where we certainly could use one, and for all of the reasons I just stated. But, um, we're also making some pretty big investments this year, and so just wanted to get council's thoughts on timing and comfort level. Cause I don't want us to have this sit too long with, and I, I don't want it to be a last-minute decision where we're doing something in December, I'd rather tee up some conversation early, plant some seeds, um, and just gauge interest level. One other thing comes to mind as I'm just been thinking about this topic. If council were to look at, think to the twenty forty comp plan, the entire southwest quadrant of the city in the twenty forty comp plan is commercial, and that is not commercial today, and so if that really is our vision, now is the time for a community development director to make that happen, um, because that naturally is, it's a long ways, we're a long ways today from making that become reality, and so that would be a reason why we should do this position now. Um, I'm just kinda balancing time and need and interested in your thoughts.
Well, when I took a look at the budget as a whole, you know, I tend to agree with you, this was the area for me that I had the most uncertainty. Um, and, you know, could support kinda suspending that for a year. Um, but I, I think you've made some very good points, and I guess I would turn to staff to say, why now?
And I can provide some background to that, like, as I told the EDA, one thing we look at, having people, or a, a staff member assigned to the EDA of community development, we're one of the few cities that do not have any FTE associated with our FTE, with our, with the EDA, excuse me. When I looked out, you know, as part of this, sort of developing this position process, I looked at nine other cities, and the majority of those cities have staff dedicated to economic development. This is also a position where, as they start to bring commercial development back into the city, technically can bring, increase that levy, you know, the tax base that we have with the city, which helps offset some of that expense that you have there. And reality is, is where we are from an EDA perspective, is that we've spent probably the last two to three years really in a reactive footing, I can't, with my current workload, I can't put it to proactive, I can't proactively go out and meet with developers, you know, I try when I can to fit in presentations at development summits, uh, land development summits, technology development summits, um, but they're limited, I can't go as many as I should, you know, just because I have other responsibilities. This position would be able to do that, they'd put us in that more proactive foothold and get our name back out there, because a lot of development is who you know, it's reestablishing Forest Lake as a name. When I go out to development, and I speak to developers who are from the metro, west metro, they think that we are off the map, we're not even on the radar screen, so I have to do sort of that comeback, you know, we think that we have all this avail, we do have a lot of land, we have a lot of availability, a lot of pros, or, you know, there's a lot of opportunity out here, but the development community does not know about it, because we're just not proactive enough in terms of outreach to that. Bringing it back locally, moving from a planning foothold on the development of the downtown plan to an execution foothold, we need to be engaging with those businesses more proactively. Again, that's not something I can actively do right now. A community development person would be able to go out, have those meetings with the businesses, sit down, address their concerns, um, and as those downtown planning projects go forward, they can really shepherd that process through and make sure those businesses come along with us, instead of trying to fight us down the road saying, hey, how is this working? So, I think there is, at this point, it's an opportune time to really bring on a community development and EDA person, just because we're at that spot right now where, when we looked at our strategic planning, economic development ranked high. And I think if you wanna execute on that, you have to put capital behind it, and now it's time to start putting some capital behind that to really take our economic development and community development to the next level, so that's why it's included in this year's, um, proposed budget.
When we, when we, um, review the budget on Monday, could you include some slides that kinda reach back to the statistics that, I know when we did the, um, the Urban Land Institute study, and there's a number of other, Chris Eng always has this number in the back of his pocket of cost of services of, you know, it, it's over, for every residential tax dollar that we receive, it costs over a dollar to serve that, that residence, and then balancing that with the commercial, which is, it's like thirty-seven cents of cost of service for every dollar of tax. Could, could we include some of that information, cause I think that helps to understand why we need a balance, we've had a lot of discussion in the last month about residential development, and, but we've also had a discussion about, you know, keeping this tax rate moderate. Um, and if we want to continue that moderate tax rate, then we've gotta have that balanced growth, and so having that as part of the discussion on why EDA now, um, I think would be helpful just to help guide us into a deci- decision.
Absolutely. I, I don't have the numbers off top, I have, I do know exactly what you're referencing, I will dig those up.
And don't quote, I'm, it's, it's over a dollar and like thirty-some cents, but that's not up to date either, so. Ryan, I think you had something to add.
Mayor City Council, I'll just talk about the community development aspect of it all. You're potentially on the verge of having more residential development than you've had in the city since two thousand and five. That's how close a lot of application stuff is. Uh, revised concept plan was already even submitted Friday. Um, and I think it's just been a position you guys have been missing out on compared to a lot of other communities around you, I mean, you go south, you go west, you go east, all these other communities have a community development director that leads the development in the community. You guys are also discussing several, uh, ordinances and standards that you have on development. You know, that's gonna be a person that could, uh, work forward or towards on that more in a experienced pathway, uh, that can get you to some of those decisions faster, cause we're also, developers come to us quickly, but never provide the answers quickly, so they come and go with these quick start conversations, but we never get to the next step where if we were able to serve them right at the front door, they're gonna wanna be involved, because the last thing a developer wants to be involved with is not knowing. When they just start not knowing, they go to the next community. And they move and build the product and hit, hit the peaks, you know, that's what they wanna do, they wanna move fast when they move, and if you don't move fast with them, they'll go find somebody else to move fast with them. You know, based on the developments that we know is in the pipeline, you're obviously gonna see a lot of potential stuff coming up, if Highway ninety-seven gets redone, there's gonna be stuff coming along. The two county projects, there's gonna be stuff that just happens naturally because of that. And what we haven't even talked about tonight is the whole Highway eight corridor that's being pushed in two thousand and twenty-four construction too, and if that goes through, your transportation network just dramatically improve, improve. So, if you're gonna be playing catch-up from, again, and not have this person in place to deal with all that stuff when it comes, you're gonna miss the, bat's not gonna hit the ball. Another thing with community development, you're gonna see payback in that instantly, because you're not gonna have to use consultants to do all the stuff that you do now. This person should be able to take on a lot more role and responsibility than handing stuff off to your consultants that you're paying. So, you're gonna have instant payback on that position. That's something I don't think you guys really realize all the time, it's, you know, oh, let's just have Ryan and his team do it, they'll take care of it. Yeah, but that comes with a cost too, and that's gonna affect your budget at the end of the day, if that's somebody that's in-house dealing with it, long-term, you'd be better off, so, that's just my two cents on community development.
Thank you, Ryan. I think that answers the why now question.
And if I could just piggyback one, kind of Ryan jogged my memory from the, I was on a land development panel last Wednesday, and one of the things that we discuss quite a bit with the development community is they always talk about market risk, you know, when you put land development, there's risk in what you find in the ground. You know, then they want speed to market, they want assurances that when they go in there, they can build. But one thing that they talked about quite extensively, um, during this panel discussion was process risk. So, they go to a community that may not have a fully built-out community development department, they may, they may leave that as more process risk, cause they can't get their assurances in terms of, I submit on the first, when's my approval's come forward, because my financing is depending upon that permit. And you can give them a more assured process, you tend to attract more development, so that process risk is, is definitely a factor when sites selected are looking at where they're gonna put their next development, on both the commercial and residential side.
Mayor Bean, just a comment, when I look at this, um, I think if we have an opportunity to be proactive, we're, I see, we're a very reactive community. Um, with the community development EDA position and getting, you know, more commercial business here, we're gonna attract more people to our, to our city for, who are currently, you know, finding places elsewhere around us. Um, having said that, we've put the police sergeant off for five years, and it's, it's all a domino effect, because if you, once you we increase our housing, we need, we need the police protection, so it's sort of like you can't really
Yeah.
You really need both, quite honestly, and I know that's maybe not gonna be a, a popular statement in the community, but, I mean, we're behind in community development, I think, in bringing business.
Right.
Yeah, I, I would a- agree with you, and one of the things that I, I, I'd like to point to, now can you flip ahead to the slide that has our um, benchmark cities, our, our levy? So, we, we're playing catch-up, but even in playing catch-up, we're still right in the mix of, right in the midst of our benchmark communities, and so to me, that gives me more confidence that, yes, that both of these, you know, significant investments are the right, are well timed and needed. Um, because again, we're, we're, we're still very much in line with benchmark communities.
Well, it, it, um, was really helpful to hear you, Dan and, and Ryan as well, I mean, there's clearly, um, the potential for a significant return on investment um, with, with that position, and I, I didn't necessarily understand it until I heard you today, and, and then Ryan, of course, echoing that as well, and, and also understanding that, you know, we are already spending some dollars with Bolton Mink, you know, that will ultimately be able to shift here, and I think that's an important distinction in, you know, in decision-making here as well, that we are already expending some dollars in this category, we're just shifting them a different direction and bringing that a little more in-house and having somebody, you know, that's targeting their efforts in that area, so.
Yeah, we're kind of in a situation where we're still feeling growing pains, and, you know, and so we kinda stagnate, and some issues there. Just even some local projects have been hard-hit with that. And so, yeah, I think, uh, you know, need somebody to, to replace, uh, Donovan. And so that can kinda go right into that same mode, I would think, without costing us a whole lot more money, you know? And so I'd, I agree with, Aaron, that Dan has said, and, and Ryan, and everybody that, uh, waiting doesn't necessarily help.
Other, um, do we have other questions or other specific, um, kind of data points that would be helpful to see between now and Monday's discussion? Again, Monday's discussion is preliminary, we can go smaller in the future if we need to, but we can't go bigger.
Everything's pretty straightforward for me at this point, my questions are answered, so.
Anything else? Staff, anything else you'd like us to consider at this point? All right. That being the last item on our agenda, just doing a quick double check here, um, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
All right, if I, if I made this add one more comment.
Please.
Not related to budget, but just a reminder to the council that IT is upgrading our email, uh, starting, I think they actually are doing it now, cause I tried getting my email and I couldn't get in.
Oh, goodness.
So, we're going to a new Office three sixty-five, which just requires a new dual authentication. If you have any questions on that, IT staff will be here all day tomorrow, or just reach out to me and I can help walk you through the upgrade process.
Thank you.
Are passwords converting in that process, or is there a new setup that we, we were?
So, passwords should convert over, um, it's basically now, if you access on a mobile device or a computer, you need to have dual authentication. A multi-factor authentication to get in, and I think that will stay as long as you don't change your password, but I don't know the IT will be here, like I said, they're gonna train me a little bit on it tomorrow, but if you have any questions on how that works, reach out to me, I'm happy to.
Is that gonna help with some of the junk mail?
I don't know if it's that good.
Um, also, just quick note reminder that tomorrow, we do have the downtown planning session at seven o'clock in the community room.
Community.
Community.
Or online, if you wanna do the online, I had a conversation with the planner today about, they're geared up for both options.
And I've talked to several people who are thrilled about that, so we'll see if they show up, you know, I'm hoping that they do, because they were really thrilled that we were able to make that happen.
Is that gonna be up in the community room, or?
Yeah, okay.
All right. That being the end of our agenda, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, one. Second.
Motion and a second, all those on paper, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose?
Aye.
And we're adjourned, thank you, everyone.